Let's go ahead to our public speakers, yes.
Through the chair council member Kaplan has her hand up, I believe she has some announcements.
Thank you so very much and thank you Chair Gallo for the opportunity. I wanted to be sure to let everyone know as we talk about the incredible sports legends of our past and our history and our present, to also talk about the sports legends of our future, who you can see at the Oakland Arena on February 15th. The Oakland Arena will be the host of the HBCU NBA All-Star Classic. The NBA All-Star Games are coming to the Bay Area, not only to San Francisco, but about half of the events will be taking place in Oakland, including come experience the spirit of Rorico at the Oakland Arena. You can get tickets online for the HBCU Classic Tuskegee versus Morehouse at the Oakland Arena on February 15th as part of NBA All-Star Week. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from the public speakers, please.
Thank you Chair Gallo, calling in the names of those who signed up for open forum. Once you hear your name, please approach the podium or please raise your hand in the Zoom app. I'm lowering all hands in the Zoom app. So, once you hear your name, please raise your hand in Zoom or approach the podium. Michael Branson, Jean Hazard, Chase Fowler or Fohler, sorry for mispronouncing your name, Jennifer Foster, Nicole Welch, Tony Di Dukupa, I'm sorry, thank you, Lakshmi, Robin Levinson, Lake Tibalt, Rebecca Johnson, Michael Patterson, Juanito Russ, Sarah Fine, Asada Olabala, Pallavi Sumumati, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, Simeon Ramy, Caleb Smith, Akila Leslie, Gwen McKellen, in no particular order.
So this Thursday, the Privacy Commission is meeting. And the Privacy Commission agenda says that they will form an ad hoc committee that will look at the possibility of federal executive orders and obligations that might impact immigrants, LGBTQ, and DEI-related programs. So why is the Privacy Commission taking that up? Why don't you take it up to deal with the fact that you are a sanctuary city and you might have problems related to whatever because of that? But you're throwing it into the place of private citizens to do an ad hoc committee. Step up. Now, I'm gonna tell this to all black people. Don't get thrown into this trap of believing that DEI has something to do with you. Diversity and equity and inclusion programs, white women benefit from that. Affirmative action, white women benefit from that. We don't benefit from any of those programs. So stop getting about you're gonna boycott Target or you're gonna boycott this because it doesn't impact us. Now Monday, the legislators met and they came up with $50 million, 25 million so that you can legally protect illegal immigrants, another 25 million so you can give to lawyers and whoever, resources and services to protect illegal immigrants. The Republicans were trying to get these people to say that money cannot be for people who are here illegally committing crimes. They would not allow it. So right now, the state of California is saying, "We will protect criminals as a part of the protection of any illegal immigrants in the state of California." And why are they doing it? Because illegal immigrants who commit crimes fill up the jails. Everything that's going on is deception. Donald Trump could care less about DEI. It's by taking all of the federal money that he must and...
Thank you Ms. Olabala.
So again, take out your phones here in the chambers and at home. Go to cleanoakland.com and look at my blog. So the first thing you're gonna see, certified rebuttal to the argument in favor of the transaction and use tax. Out of the four proponents who were supporting, in favor, two of them are mayor candidates. Why would you support them if they don't even know what the ballot measure is? The ballot measure is not a sales tax. The ballot measure is clearly a transaction and use tax. You will also see 50,000 residents in District 6 denied representation, violates the California Constitution, Article 2. You will also see the Shangta indictment, okay? Along with Andre Jones, David Duong, and Andy Duong. You get to get the complete transcript of the grand jury indictment. And the enabling legislation for the use tax is Assembly Bill 155 Use Tax. So you could go again to cleanoakland.com and look at my blog and everything that you want to know what's wrong with the misrepresentation by the city attorney, particularly city attorney. Because you're there in that use tax, they're denying you the opportunity to file any legal action for redress. That's illegal. You can't cross over into terms of the judicial jurisdictions. That's not supposed to be included in this ballot measure on April 15th, the transaction and use tax. Thank you. Cleanoakland.com and go to my blog.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Branson. I've worked for the city for six years in the office of the city attorney. I'm a member of Local 21. This council should be upset and should be demanding answers from the administration. Local 21 and our union coalition partners have been identifying problems and proposing solutions for quite some time now. Council members have identified similar problems and have not received answers. We have been trying to work with the administration to address our challenges collaboratively. Despite what some council members have heard, the administration has not followed through on discussions or negotiations with Local 21. Let's take a step back to see the chaos that is taking place. The administration is cutting off existing contracts, refusing to issue bonds, not responding to council requests to implement police overtime accountability, not providing cost estimates for a 2% temporary reduction in pay for top executives, not providing answers to identified problems with business tax collection. Instead, they have sent out layoff notices that do not appear to follow civil service rules. Layoff notices are being sent ahead of release of exempt limited duration employees, are being sent to workers with seniority who love serving Oakland residents, to workers who are in revenue generating positions, and to workers who are in positions that are not funded from the general purpose fund and therefore do not solve this problem. These steps do not make sense and in some circumstances are cruel. And let's be clear, laying off experienced city employees will lead to service impacts. Please demand answers from the administration and let's work together for Oakland.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Foster and I'm the president of Local 21's ANW chapter. I'm a 22-year employee and resident. I'm in a self-funded position and I personally generate the revenue to pay my salary, the salary of my team, and a city attorney. Thursday, I received my layoff notice. The administration and human resources have violated Oakland Charter, Chapter 2.08 Civil Service Rules and Procedures. This process is not lawful nor just and these letters must be rescinded immediately. Administration and HR has refused to meet in labor with good faith. The union currently has a perb charge filed against the city for refusal to provide information since December regarding financials, layoffs, and job classifications impacted. Myself and other non-general fund and revenue generated workers have been targeted too. Make no mistake, this chaos and disregard for civil servants and the services we provide is directly reflective of what's happening at the federal level. This is not Oakland. These layoffs are in opposition to council's request to make layoffs last option. Workers cannot be held accountable for failure of administration and finance to responsibly manage revenue, collection, and budget properly. The administration and human resources are in violation of Civil Service Rules 9.2, layoff procedures, whenever it becomes necessary to reduce staff under the provisions of Section 9.01. These rules, no permanent employee in an affected class shall be laid off while there are employees without status in the same class. Employees without status in class shall be separated in the following order: temporary, probationary. No contract for services shall result in the loss of employment by person having permanent civil service status. Thank you.
Good afternoon, President Protam Gallo and council. My name is Lakshmi Raj Gopalan. I'm a planner with the city's Planning and Building Department. Yesterday, I completed four years with the city of Oakland and I'm also a Local 21 member. My department processes permits, ensures building safety, answers several public inquiries, and keeps the city compliant with all the state laws so that the city can continue to be eligible for affordable housing funds, all while facing a severe staff shortage. I'm deeply disappointed by the city administration's decision to balance the budget on our backs who keep the city functioning. And instead of taking accountability for poor financial management, the administration is pushing for layoffs. This approach is unacceptable. We demand that the administration address OPD's rampant unbudgeted overspending, reduce the excessive number of highly paid executives, and collect business taxes the city is owed. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Chase Fowler and I'm a civil engineer at Oak Dot and a proud member of IFPT Local 21. It has been incredibly disappointing to witness the city administration's narrow-minded focus on attacking city workers as we attempt to solve this budget crisis. As a civil engineer with Oak Dot, I helped redesign our streets and sidewalks to make them safer for all users of all abilities. The administration's actions and return to office mandate will not only exacerbate our department's 25% vacancy rate by hurting our ability to recruit and retain the highly skilled workers that we need to make our streets safer. It's incredibly short-sighted, fiscally irresponsible, and disappointingly unimaginative. Rather than building our city's capabilities for providing essential services, they have chosen to play act as tech CEOs, slashing staff through layoffs and return to office mandates. If the administration is truly interested in solving our budget issues, they should take specific actionable steps to rein in police overtime. Every department in this city has a budget that they work within, Bar 1, OPD. My union and several members of the council have put forward budget alternatives that do not harm the city's ability to provide essential services for the residents of this city. The administration has chosen to ignore these alternatives and put all their energies towards laying off city workers, ignoring civil service rules and echoing the anti-worker rhetoric and policies that we're currently witnessing at the federal level. Please direct the administration to focus their efforts on bringing in uncollected business taxes and rein in OPD spending instead of crippling essential city services. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Sarah Fine, nine years of service to the city of Oakland this month, Local 21 member and employee of Oak Dot. I'm gravely concerned by the proposed layoffs and the way in which these layoffs have been conducted. Staff with 20-plus years of service have received notices. Staff have received notices while vacancies still exist in their classification in another department. This is not the process. This is chaos. And not totally unlike some of the actions we're seeing at the federal level where public employees and norms of government are also being disrespected and discarded. I represent supervisors and managers in the H&amp;M chapter of Local 21. Our members spend half our energy just trying to push through recruitment processes and retaining the staff we have, all with record vacancy levels. Our people deliver the services Oaklanders deserve and depend on. Layoffs directly hurt services and residents and must be avoided. As supervisors and managers, our members are also accountable to manage our section and division's budgets. As much as we'd like, we aren't allowed to exceed the funds we are budgeted to deliver paving, speed humps, crosswalks, and traffic signals. The city should be requiring this oversight of all departments and managing our citywide budget, including collecting all the business taxes the city is owed, instead of balancing the budget on the backs of the very workers keeping the city running.
Good afternoon, council. Excuse me. Good afternoon, council. My name is Juanito Russ. I've been with the city for approximately eight years. I started here with the CPRB and then moved to the CPRA through the creation of the Police Commission. Have worked with several of you in that capacity. Approximately three years ago, I moved internal to the OPD, to their Risk Management Bureau as an auditor, where I worked two years ago with a team of four auditors conducting audits for the federal consent decree that this city has been under for 20 years. In the bureau that I work for, the Bureau of Risk Management at the OPD, we house both our audit unit and the Personal Assessment Unit, which is the team that does risk management of officers. They, the one that identifies problematic officers, tracks how they're improving over time, flags problems, all of the things that are central core agreements of the city of Oakland with the federal judge related to the consent decree that this city has been under for 20 years. Over the last two years, my unit of auditors have lost two people. One who left to bart, one who promoted internally. So we are down to two auditors now performing all that work. On Thursday evening, I received my notice. I came in on Friday morning and found that on my floor and in my unit, the pass unit, the ones who monitor problematic officers, also had all of their civilian employees except for one who received notices. So the OPD internal oversight to comply with the federal consent decree is now down to one person in my unit and one person in their unit. And we are supposed to have oversight over and responds to the federal judge for the entirety of the OPD. I do not know how those two people are going to do their job. And I do not know what the city is going to tell the judge.
If your name was calling, you wish to address the council, please step to the podium.
Hello, everyone. My name is Robin Levinson and I was born, raised, and still live here in Oakland in District 4. I work for the Human Services Department where I help manage contracts with community organizations that serve youth ages 0 to 21 and provide school, summer, violence prevention, employment, and a lot of other services to our children in Oakland. The decision made by the city administrator to lay off permanent staff diminishes the trust that we as staff have in our civil service process. I urge you to immediately intervene to ensure that this doesn't, this decision doesn't exacerbate our staffing issues or hinder these essential city services. Members of my union received their notices before. Any ELDE, any part-time, or staff from other outside temp agency even received information about their layoff. While I deeply appreciate staff members doing work across all different types of work agreements, I'm concerned that the administration did not consult our department or union leadership about who or where to cut. We know our departments best. Let us figure out how to work together out of crisis. These layoffs also don't help us reduce the deficit. As some of my colleagues have mentioned, many of the staff laid off were in positions that generate revenue. They're also positions not funded by the general purpose fund. Because these layoffs may not have followed our service manual, they also put the city at risk of being sued for violating this MOU, which will then cost us more money. I urge you to require the city administrator to work with our unions and to work with our department leadership to collect business taxes, to reduce overhead of highly paid top executives, and to address overspending in certain departments, recognizing that other departments have not overspent. We require that the city administrator communicate with staff before decisions are final and gather our input, rather than have us learn through local news outlets what's happening or what's expected of us. These actions cannot wait until we have a permanent mayor in April. We need council to step up now.
Good evening. My name is Caleb Smith. I'm an analyst in the Housing Community Development Department, speaking during my break today. I think my colleagues from around the city have conveyed the dismay with recent developments more eloquently than I could, but I think there's an additional important point to be made this evening. These decisions about how to address the city's financial crisis, which have recently been made by the administration, should not have been the job of the administration to make. Fundamentally, all budgets are a question of priorities, a question of which programs to fund or not fund, which grants to make or not make, what is the right balance between taxes and spending. These kinds of budget priority setting is fundamentally responsibility of the city council. And for these responsibilities to be delegated to the city administration in the first place, I think is unfair to the city administration because fundamentally, the job of the city administrator, of any city manager in any California city, is to implement the direction of the city council as effectively and efficiently as possible. And to put the city administration in a role outside of that scope of responsibilities, I fear undermines the core responsibility of the city council to the voters of Oakland to make those kinds of core trade-offs and to ultimately answer back to the voters of Oakland for the decisions they make. Ultimately, I hope the city council therefore takes a more active role moving forward into some of these kinds of budget discussions and works with all the partners here today, as well as other stakeholders around the city, to find a more effective set of solutions moving forward, which again, is something that is a core responsibility of the city council. Thank you kindly for your time today.
Hello, my name is Gwen McKellen and I work in the Department of Public Works. I support the city's special events, ensuring that our street fairs and other public events recycle and compost their waste, which is a requirement of state law, and comply with the city's reusable foodware ordinance. I'm also writing Oakland's Disaster Debris Management Plan to ensure we're prepared for the next major disaster and can't get reimbursed from the state and federal government for the millions or billions in anticipated cleanup costs. We should not be cutting these essential city positions, nor should the city be leaving money on the table by cutting or refusing to fill revenue generating positions or failing to collect business taxes. Nobody should be losing their jobs because of the city's mismanagement. Thank you.
Hello, Tony DiKupa. I've been with the city for nine and a half years, currently in Community Homelessness Services. You know, we haven't had a program manager in a couple of months now. But we do have leadership. We have leaders within our program. But we are pursuing the mission every day. But we haven't had a program manager in a couple of months. Our department, Human Services, hasn't had a director since June. But again, we are still pursuing this mission every day, sometimes remotely. This city has been critically understaffed for years. That has not been a secret. We've been saying that for years. And you think we can afford to lay off 100 more people? And there are vacancies in this budget, yet we are firing human beings who have families to feed. And these people couldn't even follow simple directions, like it's literally written down. Civil service rules matter. So my question is, is Elon Musk running the city of Oakland? Or are we just trying to suck up to him? When Oakland is under attack, what do we do?
All right. Hi, everyone. My name is Akila Leslie and unfortunately, I was one of the ones from my department, Oakland Parks and Rec, who got one of the layoff notices. Again, I am the director there. You know, I am, I'm from West Oakland, so grew up, born and raised, and it's just really unfortunate that, you know, to get one of these notices, it hurts very bad. Before I was even, before I was the director there, there weren't many programs going on, you know. I was the one who came and started a lot of the programming. We have Mommy and Me programming. We have yoga now. You know, I brought in numbers from our summer camp. We were doing spring camp. So it's just very unfortunate. A lot of our community kids. I was, I was a community kid, you know. I was raised in parks and recreation. So it's just an honor to be able to give back. And, you know, I get paid out of the soda tax, which was not supposed to be cut. So I just feel like, you know, the department is cutting from the top. I mean, they're cutting from the bottom instead of cutting from the top. We've hired about three new supervisors within the last couple of months in our department. And, you know, they're all great, but it's just, like I said, it's very unfortunate. And yeah, I would, I would definitely hate to, you know, lose my position for, for what? Like I said, yeah, and a lot of our families, you know, will be very affected. A lot of, you know, our programming allows kids to stay out of trouble, like, you know, where they're gonna go. So we provide, you know, food giveaways for our communities. There's a lot of homelessness going on in West Oakland. So our community center is very essential to the West Oakland community. So hopefully, we see a change. And they're also eliminating my position. So who's going to run the rec center without me?
Greeting council members and community members. First, let me start off by saying Happy Black History Month. No matter what's happening outside of here, it's Black History Month. I'm gonna try to keep this short. This city is facing a budget deficit. This fiscal shortfall that has come to fruition under your leadership, the responsibility does not lie with the workers who keep our city running, but with the very administration that has mismanaged the city of Oakland's finances. The first point, layoffs should always be seen as a last resort, which is clearly described in the Civil Service Rules, Section 9.02. The decision to not only follow, to not follow civil service rules and issue layoff notices illustrates a clear failure in the city leadership and demonstrates such a profound misunderstanding of how government services operate. As I've previously said, upon review of the range of positions and classifications that are being laid off that are not paid out of the general fund, the fund most in the red, shows the administration did not consider all the ripple effects, including the quality and delay of vital city services. It's no secret that we are short-staffed and with layoffs, you're stretching workers even further. In conclusion, this is a structural deficit. Shared responsibilities demand shared accountabilities and it's time for the city leadership to step up and demonstrate the same kind of accountability you expect from us workers.
Good evening. Michael Patterson, IBW 1245, 24-year electrician. I said this in June, July of last year, that we would be here. Some of you who weren't elected at, who weren't in office yet are TNTK, too new to know. And that's not, and that's not a slight, because I've been here before. I've seen this happen before. I have nine electricians that I represent. Two work from municipal buildings. Seven operate over 800 intersections in the city of Oakland, maintain over 50,000 streetlights, seven electricians. I'm talking to the stewards of this city. You guys are the stewards of this city. The residents, the residents depend on you. The city workers depend on you. We look to you all for leadership. This administration has succeeded. They have succeeded in causing confusion. They have succeeded in causing chaos. They have succeeded in creating a defiant and adversarial relationship with labor. None of this is of our doing. We have tried to be a partner with the city. We have tried to meet with them. And we're hearing that you're being told the labor is not trying to meet with us, with the city. I have messages in my phone. I have messages in my phone from December where we set up dates with the city to meet about a reduction in force, and they keep changing the date. We give them new dates, they change the dates. I can't, I can't do this any, any, any longer. You have to find out why you're being told what you're being told and who's telling you that. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Rainey, are you in the chamber? Do you wish to address the council? Otherwise, we will move to the Zoom speakers. Or anybody else whose name was called. Moving to the Zoom speakers, I have two cards, Nicole Welch in Pollevi. Nicole, please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Good evening, council. My name is Nicole Welch, a 23-year employee with the Revenue Management Bureau and a president of the H and M Chapter of Local 21. I'm here because the layoff notices issued to city employees is once again an example of the utter incompetence of this administration. The level of disrespect is breathtaking. It signals to me that the administration would rather cut vital city services to the residents instead of dealing with the unbudgeted police department overtime or reduce redundant top executives. City employees were praised when we kept the lights on during the pandemic, but now that the administration's back is against the wall, they are willing, willingly and incompetently laying off my fellow brothers and sisters within the union. That is unsatisfactory. And now I'm gonna speak off the cuff. I feel that with not even following the agreed-upon civil service rules, it speaks more to the ineptness of what this administration is doing and what they're actually practicing. And at this particular point in time, I am very, very, I'm leery. I'm very sad and saddened by what is happening. These are the people who worked through the entire pandemic, the people who delivered food. My department never went home. We kept the money, we kept the lights on. And for this to be sent out without following the prescribed rules is a level of disrespect, and yet we have people who want to call us labor partners. You don't do that to your labor partners. You actually meet with us. You actually go and look for solutions and come upon mutually agreed-upon path on how we move forward. And on that, thank you, and my time is...
Thank you, Ms. Welch. Moving to Pollevi. Pollevi, please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Sorry if I said your name incorrectly. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Pollevi Somusati. I've been a homeowner in District Seven for the past 14 years. I live at the intersection of Grass Valley Road and Skyline. I love my neighborhood. We're surrounded by nature and illegal dumping. The cuts to public works, parks and rec, and transportation are gonna be very painful for my family and my neighborhood. I'm here today to tell you that the loss of Fire Station 28 in my neighborhood is already being felt very deeply. My two children, who are now attending Oakland Public Schools, both attended Betty's Children's Academy, a community fixture and preschool that sits across this fire station. Many events have been hosted that brought Betty's students together with the firefighters. At the age of three, my kids have been able to recite to me fire prevention tips, and I've witnessed myself all the excellent stopping, dropping, enrolling that dozens of kids, now hundreds of kids have learned at Betty's facilitated by firefighters at Station 28. The firefighters of this station made sure that community members knew their names, and likewise, we knew them, they knew us. I cannot stress enough their impact on our community. If you come to our neighborhood, you'll also see that we have a large population of elderly residents. You'll also see multiple disabled residents. There is probably a perception that only the privileged live in the Oakland hills. That is not the case in my neighborhood. I understand that 2.6 million has returned to the city of Oakland by way of the Coliseum and Arena revenues, with quoting one council member, "The expectations that these funds be used to save fire services." We all know this reign is not going to last. Our residents deserve to feel safe in our homes. What I am asking of you is to reinstate services at Stations 25 and 28 immediately. Please get this done now.
Dave Phelps.
Hi, City of Oakland Council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lynn. I'm Dave Phelps's wife, and I'm the Melrose 27X Neighborhood Council representative. I am here to express support and stand with our Neighborhood Services Coordinator, Arina Richards. Now is not the time to cut Neighborhood Services Coordinators. Residents' trust in local government is at an all-time low, and public safety is the top concern. The city needs Neighborhood Councils more than ever. As a resident of Melrose, D27X, Central East Oakland, I strongly oppose all cuts and layoffs that impact our Neighborhood Council's ability to function. These cuts will have devastating consequences for community safety, trust, and collaboration between residents, the city, and law enforcement. NSCs play a vital role in crime prevention, community engagement, and problem solving. They serve as liaison, ensuring that neighborhoods, especially those most impacted by crime and systemic challenges, have direct access to city resources and responsive policing. Let it be known that our wins in Melrose are thanks to working with Arina and not the council. This decision will not make Oakland safer. It will erode the relationships and community-led efforts that are essential to a healthy and resilient Oakland. I urge you to reconsider these cuts and protect the positions that will keep our neighborhoods engaged, empowered, and secure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. At this time, all names have been called.
Thank you, and thanks to everyone. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Well, you wanna comment? We have, you have 20 sec...
20 seconds. Okay. I just wanted to state, well, most of the people who were in here have gone, but I guess I will just put it on the record that when we passed this mid-cycle budget, there were commitments or agreements that were made about potential cuts that would be forthcoming. There were no good options. Nothing was ideal at that time, and we made that very clear, that these cuts were coming. And the administration went through a process to identify those, those cuts. I'm not really clear, President Guyo, on what that process was, and that is what I'm beginning to hear from, from constituents in my district, as far as residents are concerned when it comes to CBOs, as well as the staff that serve the city. So through the chair to the city administrator, I do have some questions that I would like to know if it's possible to come through in a memo that identifies without sharing sensitive personnel information, the positions that have been cut and how, if possible, once again, I'm trying to consider the sensitivity of the individuals who receive these notices, but how those decisions were made and what these positions are. As I stated, when we passed the mid-cycle budget, we were clear that some cuts would be coming, but at that time, I also requested information on how we would curb overtime spending in the Oakland Police Department. And I would like to get that information because from what I understand and was shared by our finance director, the majority of the overspending that has us outside of our budget is coming from one department. And I also understand from some city staff that that is because they're understaffed. So I just want some clarity based on the information that I've heard today, what I've seen in the media about the process that got us to this point. How were the decisions made? How were individuals notified in terms of staff, but also community-based organizations? I'm receiving a number of calls and emails from youth centers and different programs that are saying that their contracts are not being renewed or they haven't been paid for services rendered. So I would like to understand how or if those organizations who have rendered services will receive payments, when that might be or when it might not be, how are impacted organizations being notified, and will there be information that is made public for our staff as well as the organizations who have served the city? That said, it is my personal belief, as I came into office in 2021, that the city of Oakland is not a philanthropic organization, and I don't believe that it is the responsibility of the city, of any city government, to fund nonprofit organizations. I ran a nonprofit organization, never requested funds from the city, and I think it's time for philanthropy to really step up and support organizations that are doing real work in the city and actually have demonstrable impact. But at this time, I think it's really important that we take care of the city of Oakland to maintain our solvency. But that also means that I want to understand better how the notices were given to our city workers to help us keep the lights on, especially in revenue generating positions. So I just wanted to say that for the record.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate, this is a difficult time for everyone. I have four questions about these layoffs, and I don't expect the answers now, but if we could get them. Number one is, are we laying off from revenue generating positions? Because we asked that, and we were assured that we were not laying off from revenue generating positions. Number two, are we following the civil service rules? Number three, are we making cuts from administrative positions from the top as well? And then number four, are we laying off from non-general fund positions? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember, okay, Councilmember Houston.
My question is a little bit off. To the chair, before we continue, through the chair to all the council members, this is open forum, so members of the public aren't, didn't receive notice of this discussion topic on, on the agenda, so I would caution against getting into discussion at this point.
Thank you. And for, for members of the council, members of the public, we will have a, a committee meeting on Friday that deals in depth with the finance department, the finance, the budget situation, and we will also have a council, special council, full council meeting that would clearly receive a presentation, have debate, recommendations to the administration to recommend what our priorities will be in terms of funding, make balancing the budget, but at the same time, what is our goal, what is our strategy for the coming years? We need to develop a council strategy, goals, and also a budget that goes with that. And so we'll have that opportunity to be able to have that, not just debate discussion, but take the action to settle the current budget, but also to plan for July, because we have 2026 coming up. And then we gotta think about what is beyond 2026 that we ought to be prepared for, be balanced, and most of all, meet the, the residents' needs in our neighborhoods. So we have those opportunities coming up to deal directly with the administration and the public's information. So with that, that you have one more, because I wanna adjourn the meeting and move on.
Just through the chair before Councilmember Houston goes, just for clarification, there may be a meeting among few, a few council members on Friday, but there is no special committee or special council meeting that has been noticed through the city clerk's office. I just want to clarify that.
Yes, we will call for one, and we'll go through the process, but for this special meeting that we're having on Friday, you gotta remember, the other council members already had one. So it'll be Councilmember Kaplan, Councilmember Five, and myself, meeting with our finance directors and our administration. Yeah.
City administration, they gotta fix this mic. Everybody else doesn't have this issue but me. City Administrator Johnson is, has a hard job, a very hard job, and I'm, I'm gonna support him through this process, and I would like to know when are the union individuals that we're talking gonna come back to the workplace? When are they gonna come back to the workplace? I have an issue with that, because if we, they shouldn't have to be forced by our city administrator to come back to work. If you see our city in the condition that they are in, you should be wanting to come back to the workplace because you want to come back to the works, not forced by the city administrator to come back. So I have a problem with people not coming back to the workplace and working at home three, four times a week. I have an issue with that. When I see his staff there every day, I see other staff members there, I expect the workers to come back to Oakland's workplace.
Thank you. Thank you, and we certainly, as a council, need to take action, be unified, and move the city forward, not just today, tomorrow, but for the coming years. And with that, we adjourn the meeting. Thank you.